As stated by Councilman McIlwanny in ordinance, that's number five. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but just some of the items from this is... This resolution means that no one is better because of their color, creed, religion, sexual orientation.
Then why do it?
We all are human beings.
Then why do it?
So do you...
Why are you doing it?
Okay, folks. How do you know I'm doing it? Could you please let me...
Folks, let Councilman Shay complete. This is not a dialogue at this moment.
Exactly. I'm not engaging any... I'm not asking... You don't even know what I'm gonna say. So give me a respect. Let me say what I want to express. That's not gonna help what I wanna say.
One minute didn't help us.
So you're disrupting the meeting.
Sir, sir, please, please do not speak out on the public like that. I understand, okay? We gave everybody as much time, one minute, but as many people who wish to speak. The council, they get more time. This is the way we conduct our business here. So just please, give him the respect, even if you disagree.
Just really hurting your own cause by pushing this. Let me just, let me just make it a little easier or probably... Request a motion to bring this item and give it to the Torrance City residents. Put in a ballot. Let's see what our residents say. And go with that. We are public servants. We have to obey what our residents want. I want to bring this item back and let's talk about what will that do. And honestly, in the last four, five years when we had this resignation, this proclamation, we didn't have a lot of people making those division comments. Where you guys were at that time?
I spoke again.
Asleep.
By having this kind of arguments, you're creating division among yourself. You're telling each other that you don't like others. This is creating war.
We don't like it being shoved in our face all the time.
We don't, we're just dislike people.
Please, please, please. We can't have these outbursts in the crowd.
Putting words in our mouths out here.
No, I understand. If we got more outbursts, we're gonna have to eject, folks. And that's... We don't wanna do that, okay? I mean, you wanna listen. You're gonna be disagreeing. You should at least listen.
I'll listen to you guys. We've been here for so many meetings, for 2:00 AM, 3:00 AM. Give us some respect. You voted us all. Give us some respect to let us know what we stand and we wanna help you. We are the leaders that wanna unite all of you. That's the idea. So why I'm gonna make a motion or request a motion to bring this item back and let the voters decide that. Do you have a second?
Second?
Yeah.
Councilman Shay, that's not the item in discussion right now because there was a personal concurrence last council meeting to bring this item here today. We need to go forward unless the item fails, something happens. But we need to, we need to decide, we need to make, make our decisions open. This is an open meeting.
Right, but I wanna give an opportunity to this council to listen.
We did it through... This is, this is it. Can I ask to get some clarity from our city attorney on that, please? Can we do this?
Can you make a motion is your question?
Yes.
You can make a motion. The question is that would really be to bring an item back because putting an advisory ballot measure on the ballot would cost someone in the neighborhood probably $200,000 to $300,000. So I'm not sure that's the best use of half-bare funds.
No.
But that's obviously a decision for the council to make.
And I can see that I can deal with the same terms assessment on the cost implications of this decision.
That's why I said, you know, we are here. It's our responsibility to listen to the public. We've done our homework where two weeks ago, maybe listening to some other colleagues. But I think we make decisions all the time. Not every decision we're gonna make, we're gonna put in a ballot on.
I mean, that's, that's why, you know, I know that our city attorney and city manager, they are the advisor board, so I wanna hear what my council, my colleague, they have to say on this motion. That's okay. It's in the past. What I wanna see, like the city attorney said, that I can make a motion. I just wanna see that guy. Then we take the next step.
But may, I guess, here's what I'm thinking. You probably wanna make a motion with respect to this item first and see what happens before you suggest making a whole new item to bring something to the ballot. Two separate things, wouldn't it be?
Father, City Manager, there is a standing discussion on the floor for consideration.
Right.
It's ideal to seek the policy direction and should Councilman Shay want to pursue alternative options, we'd still always return official information regarding the cost and other considerations.
Your Honor, if I may, our council rules of order allow every council member to speak police ones before an item is decided if they choose to do so.
And that's what we're doing right now?
I was just addressing the motion so that if there was a second, everyone still have a chance to speak prior to the motion being invoked on, but there doesn't appear to be a second at this point.
Right.
Okay, Council? We don't have a second.
That's right.
That's correct?
Right.
Okay. Okay, I'll let my other colleague say if it works then I'll come back. Thank you.
Councilwoman Lewis.
I did not agree with the ballot at all. This is not a measure that we shouldn't be spending money. It's a proclamation that we've had a couple of times before. And you know what happened? Nothing. It was just an acknowledgement. So to spend time and money and energy on moving forward with a ballot measure, we have so many other things in the city we need to take care of. I would not be against that.
Just wanna make sure you're done.
I'm done.
Okay.
I'm not gonna talk anymore else.
No, sometimes there's a delay. I just wanna make sure, got it? Anyone else who on the council wishes to speak? If not, I will, I guess... Councilman Kaji.
Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you, Torrance residents, for coming out tonight after listening to your testimony. Also, receiving your emails, your calls, and personal letters. This is a very contentious matter. But first, let me, in reflecting on what has gone on tonight and also in sharing with you my own thought process on this, my family's been here in Los Angeles in the United States since the turn of the last century. But I come from a family that has been active in civil rights here in this country. My maternal grandfather, who was a medical doctor, saw that there was a need to create a hospital in the Japanese community because if a Japanese person got sick, they would not be admitted to a mainline hospital because they were not white. And so he filed a lawsuit against the state of California, which went to the U.S. Supreme Court. And in 1927, helped for my grandfather and the other Japanese doctors so they could create a hospital. Then for my father, who was, along with the rest of my family members, put into incarceration by the federal government simply because we looked like the enemy. They had to prove themselves to be worthy Americans. They were denied due process, equal protection under, under the Constitution. Eventually, they were let out, but this was after they lost all their property, all their money, everything was completely wiped out. And here in this state, here in Southern California, you have debates raging throughout the state, pointing at this community, saying, "You can't trust them. They're, they're the enemy. They need to leave." So for myself, coming from that background, I understand what it's like to come from a marginalized community. Now for myself, being raised in this sort of family that has always been activist, it's also caused me to understand that living in Los Angeles, living in California, you're not just by yourself. You learn to build coalitions across the board with all kinds of people. I was born in East Los Angeles. I grew up around, surrounded by my Mexican friends in the neighborhood, my Jewish friends. My father, who was also born in downtown L.A., on Bunker Hill, all his friends before the war were Jewish, Russian, Mexican, everybody, black, Latino. And so for him, growing up here in Los Angeles, coming back after the war, after serving in the U.S. Army as a linguist in the Manila War Crimes Tribunal, he came back, had to start from nothing, became an accountant, was lucky to stumble into his first significant client, some company called Toyota Motor Sales, which eventually came here to the city of Torrance. But he understood that unless you built coalitions, unless you spent time building trust among different groups, we as a tiny little minority community could not achieve anything. That's what led him to run for city treasurer in the city of Gardena. He became elected. That put him in contact with then-supervisor Kenneth Hahn. The Watts riots occurred just after that. Kenneth Hahn called my dad and said, "Bruce, we need to address healthcare inequities in South Central L.A. Will you join us on the L.A. County Hospital Commission to build the Barton Luther King Jr. Hospital in South Central L.A.?" When my dad also decided that as a result of his wartime incarceration and impacts on the Japanese community on the West Coast, he decided to form a museum, the Japanese-American National Museum, which is now in Little Tokyo. But in order to create a museum, he reached out to his friends in the Jewish community, who had established their own museum. And he went to them. He also reached out to his friends in the Mexican community, also the black community. So that when, when this went forward, it got support with the L.A. City Council, the L.A. County Board of Supervisors, the state of California, and eventually support from Washington, D.C. So as this issue came forward, I'll, I'll share this too. This issue is not new to me. Back in 1994, I served on the board of the Japanese-American Citizens League, a national civil rights organization. The issue of marriage equality came to our board in 1994. Same-sex marriage was not on the national agenda. There was no discussion at that time. I had been fully invested in my church, which my family helped to establish in Gardena. I sought out counsel from my denomination. My denomination did not have a position on same-sex marriage. There was no discussion about gays. There was, and so they said, "We can't help you." I sought out, you know, counsel from others in my community and also other communities here in Los Angeles. I asked them, "Can you guide me? Can you make a recommendation for me?" Ultimately, it came down to me getting a, a letter from one of my friends who told me, "I'm gay." I didn't know it. He said, "Please, support this." Now also, I came to my own conclusion based on the law. And I turned to the Fourteenth Amendment, due process, equal protection. In 2015, the U.S. Supreme Court did make a decision on marriage equality in which the Supreme ruled in support because there were laws that violated individuals under the equal protection and due process guaranteed under the Fourteenth Amendment. But I'll tell you this, when I did make that decision in 1994, which I believed at that time was the right decision, what I experienced from my church family was something I would hope that none of you ever experienced. Because at that time, there was no really organized gay organizations in the Asian community. So for myself and my family, it was just us. So fast forward to now. When I look at this, it brings back a lot of those memories. More importantly, it brings back the testimonies and those individuals who reached out to me who said, "Thank you. Thank you for what you did." It also makes me think back to what every minority group has experienced in coming to this country. When I look at this council, there was a time when none of us could be on this council. That's fact. There was a time when none of us could buy a house here in this city because of restrictive covenants. There was a time, as I shared, when Japanese could not walk through the doors of Torrance Memorial Hospital because that was against the law. Each one of us, as immigrants here, we've all had to pay a price. It's all in our family histories. And it's back maybe X number of generations of your own family, but it's there. So when I think of this resolution, and I've had to think really long and hard, and I've responded to a lot of people who have shared their thoughts on this, I do not want this to be divisive. But what I am seeing right now is that there's a need for some of us in our community to take a stand in between those of different viewpoints. The only way to overcome this understanding is by building bridges. Those bridges didn't exist back in 1942 when my families got marched to camp. No one stood up for us. But I believe we have an opportunity to be different because this city has proven it over and over and over again. I'm here today and I, I consider it an honor to sit on this council. I, I consider it, you know, my fortune to go anywhere in the city and to shake hands with people, listen to their concerns, respond to them to the best of my ability because this is what Torrance is. And I, I would hope and pray that if we do move forward on this, it doesn't push us apart. If anything, we've now identified a need to bring our community together. And I would speak to those in the LGBTQ community, I would speak to those in the faith-based community, that this is a time for us to understand that we do have differences, but we are Americans living in the greatest country in the world. We need to learn how to work together and set an example for the rest of the world. And we can do it. I spent my career working between the U.S. and Japan. There was a time when the U.S. and Japan were at war, and it was total war. It was war without mercy. Today, the U.S. and Japan are best friends. There's always differences, just like in any marriage. But what got that bilateral relationship from being mortal enemies to being friends, it took a lot of effort. It took a lot of people in between breaking bread, becoming friends, raising their kids together, and overcoming those unintermittable differences. I know we can do that here. I do believe it. And if this is a starting point, and as supporting this is a starting point, I commit to working with everybody to bridging, to helping to bridge and address any misunderstandings that there are. It's gonna take hard work. It's not gonna happen tomorrow. I understand that. All right? But if there's a good faith effort made by all of you here in Torrance, I think we can do it. I have faith in you. I really do. So for that reason, I am in support of this, but I am committing myself, and I believe that everyone on this council will also commit themselves, to bridging any differences, any misunderstandings that there are. And I'm not saying to my friends in the faith-based community, "You're suddenly gonna change your lifestyle, you're gonna change your identity as a result of engagement." No, I don't believe that. And I'm not saying that that's gonna happen. Same to those in the LGBTQ community, okay? You understand, you've heard people's concerns, people's fears. But I really believe this is a great opportunity for us to step ahead and make this different.
No, you're stepping backwards, John.
I hope so.
No, no.
You say no.
It's over.
But if there's just a few who reach some level of better understanding...
And that's why Sean didn't call me.
I'm all for it.
Ninety-eight percent of your city is against it.
They're not even voters here.
They're not even voters, yeah.
Thank you, Councilman Kaji. Councilman Matucci.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I fully understand that this may have been a tradition, that we've done these proclamations over the last few years. You know, I'm, I'm not against the LGBT community, as some of you guys claim already. We've got some disturbing letters automatically calling everybody that's against the LGBT movement bigots, bigotry. Now, if you actually look up the definition of bigotry, those emails are a great example of bigots, one that is not, you know, looking at the opposing views and saying, "Hey, you, you think one way, I think another. Let's go on. Let's move forward. Not a problem." Again, I'm not against the individual. You can live your life the way you want, whether you're born that way, or you became that way, or chose to be that way, it's irrelevant to me. Because that's your life, and in America, you can live your life free and the way you want. But don't shove your LGBT...
Thank you.
...movement down my throat.
Thank you!
Don't shove your God down our throat. It's the same thing, right there!
Let the council speak.
I'll tell you one thing. Some of you may agree, some of you may not agree. And again, it's irrelevant because in America, we can actually sit in the same room and not kill each other all day, okay? And God bless America for that.
Yeah.
That's for sure.
But I'm gonna speak freely because my right to do is what yours, right, is to speak freely about me online and do whatever you need to do, whatever. There is a movement, okay, that is shoving the LGBT lifestyle or whatever, born that way, you became it, doesn't matter, being shoved into our youth. That's what I'm against. I think I saw some teachers says, "Leave our children alone, leave our kids alone." I truly believe that. Now let me, let me, let me give you an example so that you don't think I'm, you know, completely lunatic. A ten-year-old, a ten-year-old was asked, "What is your gender?" Now this was asked by adults in a school, in a school, to be specific, sixth grader. "What is your gender? A, male, B, female, C, non-binary, and D, something else." What the hell is something else? They're ten years old, guys. That's the movement that is being pushed. It's not your fault. It's not your fault. You wanna live and be recognized? I'm truly sorry that you feel that you need a resolution or proclamation to feel loved by a city. And shoving it down somebody's throat and forcing the council to approve it, that's not love, guys.
Nope.
That's not love. And I'm sorry you feel that you need this. I am, I truly am. But let me, let me tell you another question that was asked. Let's go down to number four. Remember, ten years old. What were you doing at ten years old? You weren't answering these questions.
No.
Some people describe themselves as transgender when they think or feel about their gender is different from the sex they were assigned, I've heard. Are you a transgender? "No, I am not transgender," is one of the answers. "Yes, I am transgender," is the other answer. I am not sure if I am a transgender. Or D, decline to respond. Again, we're asking this to ten-year-olds, guys. Ten-year-olds.
Disgusting.
And then we move on. Another question, a same questionnaire, guys. Which of the following best describes you? Straight, lesbian or gay, bisexual, something else, not sure, decline to respond? That is what I'm against. That's what I'm against. One questionnaire continues, continues asking, "What kind of drugs have you used?" And it goes on down a list of drugs and how you administer those drugs. Again, ten years old, and that darn kid was my kid. You can bet your ass, I would put this on there. Bet your ass.
Shut up.
Heck, I know I'm not gonna support this. I'm not gonna support it because supporting this is supporting the LGBTQ agenda that's being shoved down our throats.
That's right.
Thank you! Yeah!
Council, Councilman McIlwanny.
I mean, what do you say after that? That's decisive. That was decisive.
No one...
Call the item.
You know, yes, I brought it up because there are people hurting, and I don't wanna see that. I don't wanna see any of you hurting. I am the same person that I was two months ago before this all started. But I cannot turn my back on people that have fought for our freedom but think a different way than I do or was born a different way than I was. I was like, like Councilmember Kaji. When I was seven years old and my neighbors would go back to Mexico on my door, and I, I came home from, from school and I said, "Guess what, Mom and Dad? I have new friends." They called, they have a nickname for me. They called me a spick. And my parents said, "Sit down, we need to talk." I have felt that too, and it wasn't fair. I am a Christian woman.
I know.
I open up my phone to the Ten Commandments. And I live by them every day. God says he will judge. I was not gonna talk religion here, but I am not gonna judge someone. The people that are out in this room right now, I wanna get up and I wanna hug some of them because I see their heads dropped in tears. They are young people that need to be supported.
They need emotional support.
Maybe they do, sir, but you have been interrupting everyone, and all I ask is for you to be kind if you're able to.
Kind to our community.
It's a big ask. It's right.
And we have, remember, we have had for years recognized June as Pride Month.
And it was wrong.
And nobody has been hurt. Nobody has been offended. The city of Torrance, the Torrance Unified School District is separate from the city of Torrance. We have no authority over things like, like Councilwoman Matucci's child, who, by the way, I adore and I love, experienced. But I won't tell you this, since, since this came forward the last few days, the emails that I've gotten from you and one text message in particular from someone who is a friend that was so graphic was unbelievable. Unbelievable. So I'm going to support this, because the people I know are good. And I promise you that only good will come out of this.
No, it's already true.
If not, so I'm going to ask the folks to just hang tight. I'm going to make a few comments here. First of all, you know, keep the noise down, no matter what I say. You know, I'm a no vote. You already know that, right? But again, you know, my rationale when I denied the proclamation, it's the same reason as last year. And I respect your choice of sexuality, your choice of lifestyle. I even had the whole LGBTQ group invite them to the council, and each of them had an opportunity to speak to me, too. And to this day, I think every time I see any one of you in any public places, I think I've embraced you as friends. All right? And I hope you realize that as well. And we just don't need to promote it. That is my issue. Just like, it's very difficult to promote this as opposed to the color, the skin that you're born with. To me, there's, I know some of you have said, "What's the difference?" There is a difference when you're born in a certain skin color.
What about pickleball?
Pickleball was not approved this year. There was a time in this city where we were just doing proclamation after proclamation after proclamation. And then I started reviewing it, because a proclamation shouldn't be handed out just because it's a popular thing to do.
Yes.
There was a time that I denied a proclamation. I shared with some folks that came that said, "Watch your dog week." Don't take it flippantly, but I just want to share with you, I'm not a dog hater. I just didn't think it merited a proclamation. But go ahead and watch your dog, and I'm perfectly fine with that. I share that as an example, right? And we have to go through that process. When I was a councilman, sitting there, when the previous mayor did a proclamation, yes, I didn't like it. But since the mayor made a proclamation, that was the decision he made, so I did not make any noise about it. So, yes, you know, I would be a no vote. It does not mean that I do not care about other peoples who disagree with me. So I hope that explanation is clear. You know, this is, you can choose how you want to live, and I will still respect you for that. And if you don't, and that is okay. You know, as adults here, we need to agree to disagree, and agree to disagree respectfully. Okay, any other council members that have comments?
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. I think that this, oh, Councilwoman Lewis.
I sent city attorney Sullivan something about the resolution, if it does pass, about signing.
Traditionally, the ordinances and resolutions are signed by the mayor, the city clerk, and the city attorney. That's how it's traditionally done. If the mayor would not want to sign, and under our rules, the pro tem is allowed to sign if the mayor is either out of town or is unable to do so due to his authority.
And nothing for religious beliefs?
Not in our rules of order, no.
Actually, I believe when I, when we carried a motion for the no confidence resolution of DA Gascon, Mayor Fury decided not to sign, as the pro tem. So, in this case, I don't know how the vote's going to be yet. You know, we're making an assumption. But I will not be signing this if it's those in favor. I'm just standing there.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Their signature is truly a formality. It doesn't change the fact that the resolution is adopted or not adopted. So if a resolution or ordinance is adopted, and the mayor would refuse to sign, or the city clerk would refuse to sign, or the city attorney would refuse to sign, the action is still taking.
Okay, any other comments from the council? If not, maybe the first thing I should do is ask for a number and type.
Mr. Your Honor, this is Resolution Number 2024-23, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Torrance, California, approving and formally recognizing the month of June of Pride Month.
I'll make a motion to concur with Resolution Number 2024-23.
Second.
Start voting, please. Councilmember Shink. Your Honor, that motion carries with Councilmembers Matucci and Shink voting now, and Mayor Tcham.